Good morning, everyone. Can you hear? Am I on? Yeah, I'm on. Good morning, everyone. Can I have your attention, please? Good morning and welcome to the City Council work session for Monday, June 17th. As you know, and for those listening, work sessions are a time when council gets together to discuss upcoming issues and topics and items that will appear on the City Council agenda normally for action at a future council meeting, and that's generally within a couple of weeks following the work session. During the work session, it is council discussion. We take no public comment or public input, but of course, the public is always welcome to attend our meetings. So with that, let's get started on item number one, 1A, Potato Grower's Horizontal Improvement Support Request. And Anthony Russo, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. We are coming before you now to kind of share an update on the Potato Grower Building, where it currently stands. Everyone's seen the work that's gone on. They're coming close to completion with a opening date coming later, late summer, fall. They are here to share a little bit about that project, and we had discussed a long, long, long time ago, some of the horizontal improvements and site work that needed to be done there, including the electrical work, sewer alignment to the property, so all the utility pulls that have to come in. It's quite extensive, and so they're looking for some support on that. But with that, I'll go ahead and let them come up, share a little bit about the project, what they're looking for, and what they're doing, if that's okay with you guys. Unless you have questions for me first?
No.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. Good morning, everybody. Do we have a presentation, Anthony, or no?
No.
Okay, all right. Yes, Anthony mentioned, we're in the last stage of finally getting this building back into use, and this last stage is the most costly. A lot of that work has been things that we haven't needed on that building, as we've been just kind of using it as a storage space. But to put it in use, we've had to connect it to basically every utility that you can think of. There was no sewer to the building, no water, no electricity, no gas, and so we've had to connect all that stuff in order to get it back into use. A majority of the work that's being done has required us to work with the city because it's the city's alleyway that runs between our property, that the Potato Grower Building's on, and our neighbors, basically. I think other than the fire suppression that we're running, all the other utility improvements have also benefited the four other property owners that surround us, which is good for them, but, you know, we're bearing the, right now, we're bearing the cost of that. And so we're coming to the city to see how much the city can support in getting these horizontal improvements taken care of. These are all things that, you know, obviously benefit the future business and our future plans for us, but they basically get that building back into being a functioning, you know, inventory item of, you know, city property. So that's kind of where we're going. I don't know if you guys got to see the presentation. I'm sure Anthony sent it to you over the weekend or right at the end of last week. Our current idea is that we run this building as a kind of indoor marketplace, where we will, you know, we will own a business that's there in addition to three, possibly four other businesses. So not only are we bringing the building back into, you know, into use, but we're providing an opportunity for a handful of other business owners to create new businesses in town, which is pretty cool.
And they do have the presentation in the packet, so can we share a little about what's our vision?
Yeah. Yeah, if you guys do have this. There's some photos and there's some renderings of what it might look like on, what are we, on the second slide, I guess, of our presentation. Basically, kind of a big communal seating area with vendors kind of around the perimeter of the building. I think the most telling stuff is the slide after that. You can see what the building looked like when we bought it. There wasn't a roof on the building, basically, and as a result, there was no floor. That was all work that we did fairly early on. So for, you know, many of the years that we've had the property, it may not have looked like anything was happening, and that was because it was all stuff on the inside or the roof that you couldn't really see. But now, you know, now the work that's being done is all stuff that you can see outside. If you've driven by there, in the last month, you've seen the entire parking lot has been tore up, basically doing the, some of this utility work, kind of prepping that. So yeah, right now, we've got two other vendors that are not businesses of ours that will be assigned leases to be in that space, both providing food. One of them is currently in a food truck that happens to be at the distillery quite often, sushi on the roll, and the other one's called Meet and Gather. Young guy here in town wants to start a new business doing charcuterie and Italian and stuff, sandwiches and things like that. He also wants to set up a second business in the space doing coffee and ice cream and some other things, so. And then we'll have spots, we'll still have spots outside our property for food trucks. So again, we've got at least, at least four other businesses that'll be in there, potentially more that'll benefit from us bringing this, you know, building back into use. If you guys have any questions?
What's your general timeframe for completion?
Yeah, right now, the, it's August, so we could hopefully be in there, but as Anthony said, before the end of the summer would be ideal.
Questions, council?
I have a question for staff. Historically, we have not paved private parking lots, and I see on the project, the request, that one of the items is for parking lot paving for, let me get back to that slide, $252,000. Have we historically don't pave private parking lots? So what would be different about this?
This one is, pardon my voice, the, this is one that's been in the works for several years before, really when we first talked about them purchasing the both sites, the Co-op Building and Potato Grower's Building. We talked about the parking lot in the back. There's a couple options available. What I've done in the past normally would be to waive the paving requirement and keep it all gravel, but when we first talked about that with Charing Ministries Building, the brand-new building on the back side, the building owner to the east is looking at rear access to develop that building into something bigger and better, which would cross over a sidewalk threshold in back. All of that should be connected with paved lots and connectivity there, and so it wouldn't make any sense to have it left gravel. So this is a little different example than what we would traditionally do, because it was part of our early discussions with the fisherings when we took over the historic building and were willing to take this project on. It's one of the oldest and most bided buildings in the entire city that has historical value. They've also gone, as we all know, several times to get it on the registry utilized state historic preservation partnerships and those kinds of things. So it is a little unique, doesn't really set a precedent, I don't like, for all future projects, because we started talking about this one quite a while back. It's just now coming up and actually coming to fruition. One big thing that the fisherings didn't mention is that they are a little behind schedule on what we originally wanted to do on the project. We were hoping all of it would get built a little quicker, but we're really proud of the fact that the fisherings, as a private entity, have been able to cash flow this without a lot of debt. And so they're choosing to do it in phases to make sure that they can fund it without getting their business into a lot of debt, which makes their business more successful long-term, and we really appreciate that partnership. So that's why it's taken a few years rather than, you know, the first one or two years getting it done. It's taken a little bit longer. But talking to them, it's been, I think, a really good business model for them that's working really well. Kind of a long answer to your question, but there's some council members that weren't here at that time.
And I think we need to add too, Bill, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about the rail access there that we had discussed before closing off those parking spots and having the road go through, which would also necessitate additional parking and things.
And another question is, what have we previously helped with? Have we did a facade grant? Have we done other funding mechanisms helping them in the past?
David, can you describe kind of your phases and what you received?
Yeah, so when we first bought the property, the first improvement that we did was the distillery building, the old warehouse that was there, the garage that was there, turning that into the distillery. As part of that, we had to work with CDOT for access to the property in and out. And part of that requirement, basically because we're changing access, we had to widen the sidewalk at that point, because it used to be the old standard, which was, you know, pretty narrow, that you still see kind of on West Main and other parts. But because we're changing the use, we basically had an amount of money there that we weren't really prepared to, we didn't know that we'd have to do that, and so the city helps with some of that cost of repaving and rebuilding that curb to meet the new city and CDOT standards. And that was, I think, like $75,000, and that was in 2017 or 2018, 2017. And then, yes, we did a facade grant, excuse me, in this last phase of work on the Potato Grower Building, where we were doing all the historic facade work, brickwork and all that, to re-touch up the signage on the main street-facing side and the east-facing side of the building, and I believe that was for $6,000.
I want to point out that the facade grants are a matching grant. That isn't, we just gave you the money, you have a match with that as well.
Yep. Yeah, so the total was 6,000, the city portion was 45,000, I think, because it's a historic building, the rate of match is different.
Is there questions?
Yeah, did you have any other fees waived by the city?
Yes, so I don't have the current packet, but the city, excuse me, waived some of the building fees for this phase. I don't know, Anthony, if you can pull that up? Yeah. I want to say it was in the $20,000 or $20,000 range of the total.
May I go ahead and ask my question?
Sure.
I'm operating. Bill, this is new to me, to see that we would consider doing the natural gas and the electrical and all of that type of thing. I didn't, I'm sorry, just in my past, I thought we only did water and sewer type things, so this surprised me. It's new?
This one, so it's new, and it's not because it's so, it's such an old project, but at the very beginning, in order to get the private developer to even think about taking over these historic buildings, we talked early on about when the time comes, we'll bring all this forward, and we talked about being a little more aggressive. It's still around that 12% mark, which was our benchmark, would be 10 to 12% of the overall project cost. But that's why you see some of the, the different needs on this project are different than some other locations where you don't have such outdated infrastructure. But here, everything had to be either newly built or wasn't there to begin with because it was so old. So that's why it's a little different than some of our traditional ones. And then I just pulled up the building front fees, $21,787.
Was what we waived?
Was what we waived.
Other questions?
Yeah, I do have another question.
I have a personal question. What's the part about the vault? Is the vault still downstairs?
Yeah, the vault's still downstairs, yes.
And is it going to get all kinds of historical significance down there?
Uh, yeah, so we're, right now, we're planning on turning the vault into a private whiskey vault, so.
What's a whiskey?
The whole downstairs is going to be a
A fence base.
Oh, okay.
Which is kind of needed in Montrose.
What's the size of that?
It's where, when you take out the part that's too low, the ceiling's too low because it's pulled up in an, it's about 3,200 square feet. So, and it's pretty cool. The basement's the coolest part of the whole place.
I just remember the stories back from my family that the vault often had more money in it than the town banks did.
Yep.
Because that's where the money took place.
Most of that's gone, though?
I bet, so, all money's gone.
The money's gone.
I tried to explain to people that they're expecting it to be under 50. There weren't credit cards back in 1910, so they had all the cash and had to pay the farmers on the one side, and then they'd get money from the consignment of the train on the other side. So they had a lot of, a lot of cash, and the little wooden cash drawers are still down there.
Oh, wow, that's cool. Yeah, do you have another question?
Yeah, I noticed that on your plan, it had four or five restaurants in there. Is that going to facilitate a need for special kitchens, or are you going to have just one kitchen and everybody going to prep their food there? Or what's the situation with that?
So we've got a kitchen in there that is a more of a, like, prep kitchen, a cater kitchen, you know, so if you're a cater doing an event downstairs and you need to prep stuff beforehand, you can get in there. It's not, there are no hoods, we have no hoods in there. It's not a full kitchen that you'd find, you know, at a restaurant here in town. And so the types of businesses that are inside are all either, in like a case of sushi, he's not cooking anything other than rice. And then the other one, if it's all electric, basically, you know, panini pressings like that, you can do that without having to have a hood. And the real reason for that was, we knew we'd have to put, you know, penetration through the roof or the brick for utilities. We didn't want to do any more of that than it wasn't absolutely necessary, because we just spent, you know, $250,000 in a grant to redo all the brick, and we spent, you know, $200,000 redoing the roof. We didn't want to go around and poke holes through all that again, so we tried to keep that to a minimum. Also, for, you know, for our businesses, we're not, we don't want to run restaurants, so we're having other, that's why other people are coming in and doing food. And it's basically food truck types of business models that are going to be successful, like, inside the space, it just happens to be that you're inside and not in a food truck.
We know it's basically outside for two or three food truck hookups, which is going to be a 50 amp service, and I believe they're designing with the aid of the city a dump, so they can dump the stuff into our
Okay, I was going to ask you about the grease disposal.
Yeah, we have a dump that goes into the grease trap for food trucks if they need it, which is nice. You ask any of them, and that's one of the biggest things that's lacking in food trucks, is being able to service it with that kind of stuff. So we have the 50 amp service, which you don't have to run a generator and all that stuff. It's going to be a lot nicer for them.
And I would say that I have no objection at all to doing the grease interceptor and grease traps and helping with those, because that's self-preservation. It's limiting the wear and tear on our equipment and our facilities, and the amount of money we have to spend on the backend pulling that grease back out is, to me, it's a good investment.
So just to clarify it on some of your questions, you know, we've gone to a lot of DCI conferences, and you've seen like those food hall concepts where you have four or five different types of restaurants with a bar kind of set up in the middle and a single bar serving all those different food entities. That'll be similar to what they're building out in the Potato Grower.
That's what I was thinking when I was talking about it.
From that Bubblin trip, I saw that. Yeah.
This is very similar to that.
Okay.
This is a model we've kind of followed since the very beginning, was the, some of the places over in Denver, the Source, the Milk Barn, or the Milk Complex, whatever the heck that's called. And there's a couple others, of course, they're a lot larger, but same kind of concept that we've had since the very beginning when we first proposed this to the Historical Society six years ago. So that's kind of where we've been heading for that. Just wanted, somebody asked about the parking lot. One of the things is the parking lot, when the food bank, I don't know if you've ever been down there, when the food bank does their big, when they get a new shipment and stuff in, that back parking lot is almost full, our back parking lot is almost full of cars from the food bank. So, and that, and that doesn't, we don't mind it because it's during the day. We don't care. When you use the parking lot during the day, that's fine. So, and they do. So that's one of the things about having a nice paved parking lot.
You know, yes, it's a private parking lot, but as my dad just mentioned, I mean, you know, that part of town is an area of town that, you know, we definitely want to see more development in, and I know the city does too, and more investment in. The one thing that's not in that part of town is parking. There are no, there are no parking lots in that part of town. All the city ones are over here on this side of the highway. And so having, having a lot there that is lit and, you know, paved and everything else will be a good addition to that part of town. You know, the water, the water one and the sewer is a big deal. You know, we, the excavation company and the civil engineers had no idea really where the water was, so it took a long time to find it. When they did find it, it was 15 feet underground, which is way further than they thought it was, and it was a click pipe that's been servicing the four buildings on that property for however long it's been there. So we, I said, not only did we upgrade that to the actual city standards now, but it's servicing four other properties, not just, not just ours, so.
Great. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Just as a reminder, I found the packet. We first started talking to these guys in 2017, when we approved the first phase, August of 17, seven years in the works.
I do have one more question, comment, just as far as our procedural moving forward, as there is a timeline as far as getting some of this done. When do you think you can bring this before council, if that's what we want to do? Two weeks? Okay.
Would be the next council meeting, because we have one tonight. Sounds like a great project, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
I know a lot of, you know, a lot of improvements that you saw are in the historical restoration, and that's all the outside, and everybody goes, oh, it looks pretty cool. Yeah, it's basically the inside, so now we're doing the inside, and it's kind of
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
It's pretty cool, a good addition to Montrose, I'll tell you that.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a clarification question?
Sure.
So last time, we did a formal development agreement. Do you want us to draft another one for this particular, this phase?
I think so.
Okay, so we'll have the formal development agreement, and that's what will be in the packet for
I'd also defer to our city attorney, but my preference would be to have one.
Okay, so we'll copy that model.
Mr. Russo, number two, is Montrose County Courthouse tap fee waiver request.
Excellent. With this, I'll ask our friends from the county, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is, obviously, we all know what's going on with the courthouse next door. A lot of work going on right now. They've asked for some assistance from the city in the form of a tap fee waivers, and I thought it best that we turn it over to John, and he can share a little bit about the project, what's going on, and everything else.
Sure, thank you, Anthony, and thank you, council members, for having us today. The project's going great, so I can lead with that. Been a long time coming to, to get that one off the ground, but on schedule, on budget, and moving rapidly at this point. So from the 30,000-foot view, this is a total renovation of the courthouse. It's a 101-year-old building. It's never been fixed, really nothing in it's ever been, been addressed, and so the project is to fix everything. And so from top to bottom, literally, I think as we speak, they were moving native soil from the ground floor. That will be replaced with suitable fill, compacted, will have new floors. The building, obviously, in 1923, when it opened, did not have modern plumbing and HVAC. We will throughout. It's been demoed down to really the structural elements. The Lathan plaster has all been removed. Really, the front memorial hall has been preserved as is. The remainder of the building has been gutted down to structural elements and will be put back together, honoring the, the actual historical architectural features like the lightwell and the grand stairs. Those are, those are still there and will look the same, but everything else is going to be a functional, modern building. The roof tiles, which weren't actually original, they were only from the 1950s, so they were new, those have been removed the past couple weeks, and the roof reshated, roofing elements reinforced, so it's, it's the whole thing in terms of what's being done with that building. We did underground utilities in the alley, and so DMEA was our big partner on that, but you may have noticed a nice clean look in the alley. The old steel fire escape is gone, those poles are all gone, and all utilities servicing both buildings have been undergrounded. As part of that work, the, what is our current IT building, which was actually originally the county jail built in the 1930s, had some utility connections to the courthouse, because I think when they built in the 30s, they just said, easier to just stick a line out of the courthouse into the new jail than, than mess with anything else. And so we're getting that squared up, so that those buildings are independent in terms of meters and service, so that's part of the city-related work that's going on there. Thank you sincerely for city manager waiving building permit fees. That's a great help to the project, and I think what's the topic of discussion today is about $22,000 or $24,000 in utility fees that we're asking for your consideration to waive. So you don't have to cut us a check, just don't make us cut you one. Yeah.
I just think it's a, it's a great project. I think that revitalizing our downtown is of enormous benefit to the city as well as the county, and draws people into Montrose, which helps generate our revenue. And I think it's a great project, and I think it's a reasonable ask compared to a lot of the other projects we may see coming down the pike. The one question I had was, when you undergrounded the utilities, the pole that was out in our alley also went away at that same time? Was that part of that same undergrounding?
There, there was connectivity between the two. I think that was bored under, was it Cascade right there? And so, so yeah, because the utility companies had to coordinate that work as well.
There, there was a pole and a guideline at the back end of the building on the alley between us and Region 10?
Yeah, and that, yeah, that was part of the PD.
Yeah, so it was just great, great time to, I love the coordination and cooperation between the city and the county right now. It's taken us a lot of years to get here, and I'm just really thankful and supportive of the relationship we have developed between the two.
I think it's a great project, and I really appreciate the county's efforts and desire to keep this historic building a functional part of our community for the next 100 years, so hats off to you guys. What's your estimated time for completion?
By contract, it is September of '25. And so where we're at now is demo is essentially wrapping up. We're right at the end of taking it apart, and we'll rapidly be transitioning to putting it back together. That, but contractually, completion date is September of '25.
I certainly think this is a reasonable ask. Any other questions, council?
I think it's gone quite a bit faster since they got Commissioner Hanson away from trying to chur the walls down.
But she's helping.
Just out of curiosity, how many people will be housed in the building?
It's 30-some, I think, for current FTEs. You know, the, what was for many years the district courtroom on the west side of the building will be the commissioner's chambers. The veteran service officer will be back in the building, the treasurer, the assessor, both with some expanded space. Some of our IT staff will actually be in the building that's new. Commissioners, county administration, GIS, who's been there for years. Yeah, I mentioned the VSO, the county attorneys, if I didn't mention, they'll be there as well. And then we do actually have some room for future growth, because that is not an easy building to expand. You don't just tack onto a massive sandstone shell like that, and so we do have some room for future expansion as well.
At one time, there was a law library there. Is that been moved, or is that going to continue to be there?
We don't have law libraries anymore.
They used to have one downstairs in the
Yeah, when we had books.
Okay.
Back in the dark ages.
I remember those days.
The upper two floors have been empty for 25-ish years, and so we're getting the whole building back into use, and that hasn't occurred since the courts moved to the Justice Center in 1998, 99. So it's been a minute since the whole building was used as well.
Do the elevators catch all those floors?
Yes, sir, our elevator will go all the way up, yeah.
Oh, you're not putting an escalator in?
No escalator, yeah. Yeah, no, it's a, it's a modern code-compliant elevator. In fact, the micro piles are in, and that was some of the excavation work on the ground floor, so, yeah, we'll go to all four floors.
Well, thank you very much. If there's no other questions, Bill, do you have anything further? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think the plan will be for the next council meeting in two weeks.
Perfect. Appreciate it.
You have a good one.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I believe that ends our discussion items. And item number two, under staff reports, Chief Hall, report from the PD.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and City Council. For your package, you'll see our year-end for 2023 versus 2022 front ads. Realize it's a little bit late. I was in San Antonio, and I really wanted to be the one to address these with all of you, because I thought it was important.
Because I thought it was important. It's been a long time since we've had two homicides, honestly, in the city within the same year, but that's not a great stat to be able to present, but indeed, we, we did have two homicides. We are still actively working on one of them, and I've got just some things to talk about later on as far as the public defense bar, but we've definitely seen kind of a new engaged public defender's office that has been very aggressive in the justice system, especially in regards to our cases. I think we definitely are on the right track for burglary and for theft or property crimes, felony property crimes. There were large reductions in those, those crimes, and I really think it comes down to just having more presence, more people on the street, which we'll talk about here in a bit. Did see a drop in felony crimes, but just keep in mind that also our drug arrests, which are not excluding marijuana, those used to be felony crimes. So if you add 248 of those crimes with the 341, albeit, I'll take a 21% decrease any day, you know, those are still, those drug crimes are still involved, very involved crimes. Our misdemeanor crimes, you can see, held about steady, and we investigated about 2,400 more incidents in 23 versus 22. The stats that I really will focus on, though, are the increased number of traffic contacts and traffic citations. I did the math here just a little bit ago, and our officers were stopping about 66 cars per week, and about one out of every three of those vehicles or the drivers did receive a citation for something. But even with that, as you can see, our traffic accidents increased, and that's kind of a rare rare thing. Usually, when you have officers increasing contacts, the red and blues out on the street, you usually see a decrease in traffic accidents. That wasn't the case here. It wasn't a huge increase in traffic accidents, but just something to, to keep an eye on, and I would attribute that back to, just as you can all see and you all know, there's a lot of traffic coming through Montrose, so. Our felony adult and juvenile arrests are definitely down some, along with, which is good news, the number of firearm-involved crimes, and our weapon, however, overall weapon-involved crimes were up by just a bit. I do want to talk about officer use of force. We've definitely seen an increase just in the first quarter of this year with the amount of force that, that we have used. Just keeping in mind, though, that with use of force, in total of seventy-three different cases, we had over thirty-two thousand incidents that we investigated, so the ratio that we use force is actually fairly small.
Chief, does taser incidents, that counts as a use of force?
It does.
So, even in an incident, or, and I think it's important to highlight, a non-lethal-
Correct.
-alternative, that, that does count toward that statistic, which may skew it.
So, if we, if we withdraw, if we pull out our firearm and point it at somebody, that is considered a use of force. Doesn't mean, you know, if you don't shoot them, that's also a use of force, if you do, but just pulling out the firearm is considered a use of force. So, just hands-on, and then doing anything else other than handcuffing is considered a use of force. A wrestling match that goes to the ground is considered a use of force. And so, overall, a slight increase, but I guess what I wanted to bring up, kind of back to the public defense bar, back to this, I guess, thing that I've noticed here within the last year, and so, as you know, you know, the city of Montrose was very proactive with our body camera program. In fact, we came on board with body worn cameras a year before the George Floyd incident because body worn cameras are an excellent thing to have. I think they make a more professional police officer, not that we don't have professional police officers, but it's amazing to be able to review these incidences, especially when we get complaints, and be, be able to vet them quickly. But, here's the other side of body worn cameras. When we use force, even what's justified, it's ugly, and there's really just no other way to, to say that. It's not pretty, it's quick, it's fast, and it usually ends with someone on the ground. And so, our public is not, you know, except for watching, like, Cops, the TV show, they're not used to seeing that. And here in this last week, our officers have been very busy, and we had two different tasing incidents within a single day. One was an individual who was trying to get us to shoot him, and he was trying to commit suicide by cop. He kept on reaching into a bag, saying, "I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it." And, and thank goodness for the taser, we were able to tase him and subdue that subject. His final comment to us was, "Next time, I'm going to get it done and force you to do this." The second, within that same day, was an individual who we responded to after, actually, the officers heard someone being slammed up against a wall. You know, we had a report that he was actually abusing his children. The individual wasn't coming to the door, and so, we had to force entry in order to rescue the people inside. And so, as a result, that individual became extremely cooperative and violent, and he had to be tased. And so, two tazings within a single day. That individual, the second individual, actually took it upon himself to call of our, call all of our different news media outlets, including a news media outlet in Grand Junction, to essentially try to make a complaint in the news media. And so, as you can imagine, body camera footage is requested in those types of instances. And unfortunately, that entity in Grand Junction did not report the press release that we gave out. I would say left some pieces out to make it seem more sensationalized. Which leads me to really my last point. There seems to be this push towards making law enforcement less about the criminal defendant's actions and more about the police officer's actions. And our criminal defense bar, especially as of recently, are doing massive requests for our internal records, our body cam footage. Our records division is trying to keep up, but they're trying to make these trials more about the police officer and their conduct than they are actually about the person that they're, they're really there for, the defendant. And so, I just wanted to end, and then, of course, take any questions, with a commendation for Matthew Magaro. He has been working diligently and daily on responding to these defense bar requests, and without that public safety attorney position, I, I don't know how the police departments do it with the massive number of requests we get, especially from the public defender, public defender's office. And so, they've really ramped it up, not only with us, but with the school district, and so, it goes to him, for sure. So, Chris Dowsey, thank you for your department's help and support, and he does a great job. Do you have any questions about crime stats, or what I just talked about?
I just, I have a question about code, or co-responder referrals. What exactly is that, as well as the responses?
You bet. So, the mental health co-responder, we have, had one, so when these stats were presented, or when these stats were happening, we had one mental health co-responder, and now we actually have two embedded in the department. Those individuals are licensed master degree level mental health clinicianists that are employed by Access Health Centers. So, Access, it used to be the Montrose Mental Health Center, Access bought them out, they're a company out of Drango. And so, this has been a partnership that has gone all the way back to the top ten years, where we have licensed mental health clinicianists that ride with our police officers and respond to people who are in mental health crises. Not only to talk with them, I think our officers do a good job of that, but are able to immediately provide services to that person in crisis. And before, we had them, that officer had to be the one to take that person who was in crisis to the hospital, sit with them, that's where the doctor would come in and try to assess them. And now, as long as it's safe, and, you know, it usually is, we're able to hand off that person who's in crisis to that mental health co-responder, they take them to the hospital, they sit with them, and they immediately connect them with the services. And then, they follow up. And so, oftentimes, a matter of individuals not taking their medication or having some type of life need that was removed, that then can be reinstated so that we're not going back, going back, and going back again. So, it's been a great program. We fund that program with a vehicle, and then Access funds it with positions.
So, that actually puts the police officer back on the job-
Correct.
-sooner than before.
Okay, thank you. You bet.
I think I've noticed in, over sixty-seven hundred on the new connection, that I have seen increased traffic patrols out there.
It's good.
And thank you, because there are still people treated like a landing strip-
Sure.
... rather than a road.
Well, I'll be interested to see what our twenty-twenty-four stats look like compared to twenty-three. We're definitely down in the number of police officers, but, you know, good news, especially for tonight, we'll be swearing four in, and we've got three in the academy. We just gave another job offer to someone who will be starting the academy in the fall. We've got several more laterals in the process right now, and if all works out okay, we will be offering a, offer for a code enforcement position, or applicant, so that seems to be done well in the process. Very desperately needed.
When would that be, the code enforcement?
Probably within the next two to three weeks, we'll get someone on board, but they're going to have to be trained too, so.
And I want to give a kudo and a shout-out to Chief Hall, because he underwent the training for the lie detector course, polygraph test, and unfortunately, he was away from his family and away from his support system for a way long time, and I just want to say thank you.
Thanks.
Because also, you being involved in a polygraph training has allowed us to continue that hiring and that processing of these applicants and getting us these people back on board, and I want to say thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
That's a pretty big sacrifice to make, and we appreciate that.
Good. Ten polygraphs in the last five weeks, and I'm batting just a little over five hundred, so that's not too bad.
I heard that Chief Hall has suggested that all of council undergo one-
No, Mayor, I haven't.
Yeah, you notice that Chief Hall's like, "No, no."
You don't want to know that.
I do have one more thing.
I have, I have noticed he's still got a couple of U-hauls since he was down in Texas that long time ago.
For sure.
Tell us about the horse unit.
I, that was my one more thing, so. The, the new officer-citizen's mounted unit, so that we released here this Friday. So, that's a, that's been something that I've kind of held close to the vest here, here in the last couple months. I'll, I'll just throw it right out there, it's a little bit of a personal story for me, but my dad passed away here several months ago, and so, I was up in Idaho taking care of some of his affairs, and I met with some of his friends, one being the wife of a gentleman who volunteers for Jackson Police Department in Wyoming, and she talked about the citizen officer mounted unit that they have in Jackson, Wyoming, and they use this mounted unit for parades, they use it to patrol their parks, and, and Jackson is in a lot of ways similar to Montrose. And she showed me the horse blanket, and the citizens that are part of this program have a lot of pride in this program, and it's just this amazing collaboration between, you know, the police department and their citizens. It just kind of, I was talking to Bill, and we were, we were going over it, it just kind of dawned on me, what an awesome program for Montrose, if we could get it up and running. We have a community survey that says that our citizens want more patrol in our parks. We've got twenty miles of patrols. We have individuals who are conducting illegal activity in our parks, and what a great way to get around and, and actually help use citizen volunteers, but a specific type of citizen volunteer, to help us patrol our parks. And it's just kind of a cool thing, it respects our western Colorado heritage. I learned that Montrose Police Department used to have a mounted unit back in the seventies, I was unaware of that, and so, we're, we're bringing it back. And so, this, this, Chantel Bainbridge and James Legler, Officer James Legler, just completed mounted patrol school in Colorado Springs, and they, James Legler was actually best in his class, and Chantel was a close second. She said that he, he beat her by like one point in the, I guess, how you, you know, how you move, move a horse through the different scenarios. And so, we've got two people that are fully trained. We plan on using those individuals for the Fourth of July parade in the back, and then also for the amphitheater concert, and trying to build a little bit of momentum. And then, that following week, we'll open up the application process. We're, we've got a good start on policies and procedures, and then, the application itself, certainly, you, it's a volunteer program, you have to come with your own horse, your own saddle, a safe way to get the horse to and from, but we will provide some of the cold weather gear. I would really like to do this year round, even maybe more so in the winter than the summer, just because I think we've got some folks in the wintertime in our parks that we should know about, especially if they need to get to a warm place, so. That's my thoughts, right off, you know, right, right off the top of my head, but I'm really excited about the program.
I think, I think it's, Chief, it's a great program, and I think something that our citizens are going to really appreciate, because we have all heard the comments that there are times when people don't particularly feel safe on the trails and in the parks, and I think this is going to be a huge investment in making them safer, so I really appreciate what you guys are doing.
It all comes down to presence, really is what it comes down to. If we can get more presence in, in some of these more remote places, I think it's, it's going to serve us all well.
Thank you.
Yep.
He's looking for a short-sighted horse for me.
I haven't, I haven't found a pony yet, but I'm working on it. I told you to work on it.
I have two big dogs.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief.
You bet, thank you.
Any other staff reports, Mr. Manager? No? Council discussion, anyone?
I wanted to point out, we have a visitor, an in-person participant today, hiding in the back, one of our youth city council members. I'd like to say, thank you for showing up in person.
Yeah, he didn't want to be ridiculous. Well, I guess if there is-
Oh, okay. I thought he was here just hanging out.
Intern. I didn't know the city of Montrose had interns.
You did.
You've had for several years, right? So, welcome, Connor. Good job.
So, if there's nothing else, I guess we will adjourn until this evening for the regular city council meeting.
The officers at five fifteen, we're starting before off.
Five fifteen. Right here.
Yep.